Well, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Today is May 3, 2022, approximately 5:30. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item up is to approve the minutes from April 26, special meeting. Do we have any questions? Comments, concerns? Anything from the public there?
Motion to approve the minutes from last.
We got a motion from Alex.
Second.
Second by Aaron. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No? The agenda or the minutes are approved. First action item up. 3.1 is a use on review for an in-home pet sitting business at 1623 Hope Street.
The first action item up tonight is a conditional use permit from Angela Wilkerson of 1681, sorry, 1621 Hope Street. This is for an in-home pet sitting business from her home. The applicant intends, she currently accepts bookings through the Rover app, which is a pet sitting service, and also would like to operate as an independent pet sitter. So bookings for pet sitting typically occur over weekends and holidays, and she intends to accept no more than three dogs per booking, and she averages one to two dogs at a time. So pets would spend the majority of time inside with the applicant supervised for outdoor play. So regarding the number of animals allowed, the ordinance, Title 32 of the city ordinance does have animal permitting, but she is not within the confined, or she does not exceed the limit. Those would be Title 32, 0213, the excess animal permit, and Title 32, 03, 07, and that is in regards to when a kennel license is required. And again, she will not require that. And this is about a little over a half an acre fenced-in property. Plenty of space for supervised play. So considering all this information, Title 18, Article 5, Section 2 of the city ordinance was provided in the packet and shall be considered when considering any conditional use permit. Staff recommends approval of the request. Notification was made to landowners within 200 feet. No comments or concerns were reported. And staff recommends setting the public hearing for city council consideration on Monday, May 16 at 6:30. Ms. Wilkerson is here also if you have any questions for her.
Is that a newer fence that just got put in?
Hi, Angela Wilkerson. No, the fence has been there for, I think, since 2019, so the fall of 2019. The front part of the fence was just intended to be temporary. I was going to be doing a hedge there, so that's why it's not the wooden privacy fence, but haven't gotten to get everything to do the hedge.
I like that it's tall.
What's that?
I like that it's tall and keep the dogs in.
Yeah, it's six foot all around.
Did you speak with all your neighbors and they were all fine with it?
I haven't. So I've done Rover for actually two and a half years. When I started doing it, I actually talked to the Department of Revenue even and asked if I needed any sales tax license or anything to do it, and they didn't even know what Rover was.
Rover, I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, it's almost like, I consider it like Airbnb, but for pet sitting. So you can have a profile on there and you can either be a sitter on there or you can look for a sitter, you know, and go vice versa. You're just, it's just a way to connect people, to have your pet watch so that you don't have to board them in a kennel somewhere, or if you just need to drop them off somewhere for the day, they can just be in someone's home, like someone's pet and not at a kennel. So in the time that I've done it, I started doing it in 2019, and I doubt any of my neighbors could have even told you that I do it, so.
Any other questions? Anything from the public? And that's a three-pet maximum, right?
And that's a personal limit, correct?
Yeah, that was just my limit. I mean, because I don't want dogs running around tearing up my yard and house. And so it'll definitely be under the six dog limit per ordinance. And then, the reason I'm getting this now is so I just started an LLC, so I really only take repeat customers. I hardly take any new customers, and so it's just so that they don't have to keep going through Rover. And so I just recently got a sales tax license, and so I'll be doing that independently then, outside of Rover.
I don't know if it's relevant, but any idea how the existing pet boarding place is doing? That would be my only concern, is I don't want to take away from a business that's, you know, spent the money to build the facility and go through the proper channels of having a licensed business, and then we're doing them, and I guess I don't know what the demand is.
I can tell you they're doing quite well. Their checks don't bounce.
And I mean, and like I said, I've been doing Rover for a while and talking to my customers, because like I said, I don't really take many new customers. I guess what triggers the use on review is the fact that I have people coming to my house to drop off dogs. So maybe one a month, if that. So in talking to them, they even said they'd be willing to just meet me somewhere, so then I don't have people coming to my house, so.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with traffic or any of that.
And I think this is a little different than a full-on boarding kennel. This is more of a, more personal. It's not just drop your dog off with 15 other dogs.
It's like watching your family's dog, your family or friend's dog, so.
I do have a question. I'm not sure if this is really pertinent to it either, just maybe more from my own information. I believe like dog kennels, actual businesses, they do require their animals to be pet vaccines and updated and all that. Is there any potential, you know, I'm not necessarily sure why that would be really crucial in a kennel situation, I guess, but is that something that would fall in line with what you're doing?
I mean, I don't think I legally have to, since I'm not a kennel. Going through the Rover app, so in their profiles, people list all that, like all their vaccines and Rover, you know. I don't know if they actually have to upload their vaccination records when they're actually booking through Rover or what. I've never used Rover as a, you know, guest, as a customer. But so Rover has all these safeguards in place, so now I would just be just watching a dog here or there on my own. So I guess it would be more personal preference if I wanted to make sure that they were vaccinated, but.
Anything else? Any other questions? Well, thank you. Anybody want to make a motion? Motion to approve the use on review for the pet boarding facility by Brad.
Second.
Second by Alex. All in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes for me. No? Motion carries. So next public hearing is at the May 16 council meeting?
I'm setting a public hearing, actually, I'm sorry, I misspoke. June 6 would be the public hearing. We will set the public hearing at the next council meeting for June 6, at 6:30.
Action item 32 is consideration to approve the change of zoning from highway service to medium-density residential, along with a variance to the maximum attached units for an apartment complex at 715 12th Street from PSI Family LLP.
So these are actually two actions in one. We're looking at a zoning amendment as well as a zoning variance. So the applicant is PSA Family LLP. Rod Bradley is representing the item tonight. The address is 715 12th Street, and the current zoning of the property is highway service, and their request is to switch it from highway service to medium-density residential. And as part of the project plan submitted, a 21-unit apartment complex is proposed on this property. However, an eight-unit maximum is within the MDR zone. So he's requesting a variance to allow for 21 units versus the eight-unit maximum allowance for attached units, as well as height regulations to what's stated in medium-density residential. So the property is currently owned by Scott Hyman's and is listed for sale. It's currently vacant, approximately half an acre, zoned as highway service contiguous to the property on the west side or left on the picture. So the property here, what we're looking at on the screen, is the 100-year floodplain, in which it's, the orange, if you can see it, is the 500-year floodplain, and the rest is 100-year zone AO. So therefore, a floodplain development permit would also be required with the building permit to make sure that floodplain construction regulations are being upheld. So right here, it's a little hard to see on the screen there, the highlighted square in the middle, and that block is all zoned as highway service. The picture on the right shows that on 12th and Williams, on the southeast corner there, that is yellow for medium-density residential. And the highlighted parcel is the applicant's requesting to zone it as medium-density residential. So looking at that, spot zoning would not be an issue here, since the property is contiguous to another zone, another, the medium-density residential zone to the east. So with any zoning amendment that is received in our office, 60% landowner approval is required for the application to proceed to this point for binding commission review. So the application has obviously met this threshold. I believe that spreadsheet was included in your packet. I believe it was approximately 70% of the landowners within 250 feet returned their letters to indicate a yes vote. So those, like I said, those have been included in your packet. Here's the property as it currently is today. As you know, there's, can see, there's a sign that's still, I hope, still here today. Needless to say, with the wind we've been having, good. So it's currently vacant, about half an acre. Previously had two mobile homes located on it. Those had been removed a few years prior. So that's at Williamson 12th, and this is looking to the north from the alley. So this is how we're looking at it today. So I will, let's see, this is the floor plan here that's been proposed. It's a variation of one-bedroom units and two-bedroom units. So there'd be a total of seven units per floor, so that's a total of 21 units for the structure. So the variance to the maximum allowable units has been requested to address the need for rental housing options in Sturgis. So that's why we're looking at 21 units versus something that's fewer. So a site plan and building elevations have been included. They illustrate one to two-bedroom units on each floor. So since the variance is asking for a little bit bigger unit structure, the city regulations still are required for parking, green space requirements, and maximum lot coverage and so on. Those will need to be met as well. So this is the footprint we're looking at here. There's approximately 28 parking spaces, if I counted correctly, with one handicap space. So like I said, the coverage requirements will still need to be met, access off the alley and a primary access from 12th Street. And this is, the orientation is north here. This is the building elevation, like I said, it's three stories, 21 units. So the comments as a result of notification, like I said, there's 250-foot notification zone. We did receive all but five letters back. Staff, or comments received were as follows. They would rather not see the zoning changed. Another comment was, "I would like to continue having a quiet and peaceful neighborhood. This would be too many units compared to the two-dwelling/families before removal of the homes." Next comment was, "We do not need more low-income housing. We have enough crime on this side of town." And lastly, "We are coming up to our three-year anniversary of buying our home on Park Avenue. We do not want to see an apartment building next to our Western View. We would not have bought this house if this were either, vehemently no." And, oops, sorry. So going back to the landowner comments, several indicator, several landowners have indicated disapproval based on these comments. The primary concerns stem from the proposed number of units or the density, as well as the height of the three-story structure. So in the medium-density residential zone, the maximum structure height allowance is two and a half stories, but due to the existing floodplain, the structure needs to be built at or above the base flood elevation, and so below, construction below grade cannot occur. So in addition, that height requirement would need to be considered with the variance request as well. So Title 18, Article 7, Sections 3 and 6 are needed to be considered for looking at the variance and amendment request independently. So ultimately, the city supports projects that provide a variety of housing options within the city, which also falls in line with the comprehensive plan. So city staff does recommend approval of the zoning request, zoning amendment and variance request for this project. The public hearing would be scheduled for June 6, Monday, June 6, at 6:30 for city council review. And when considering this request, do make two separate motions regarding the zoning amendment and the zoning variance separately. Mr. Bradley is here on behalf of the request as well, if you have any questions.
I see you're going to put parking along the alley. Is that going to require the alley to be hard-surfaced at that point, then?
Eventually, we would probably want that to be hard-surfaced, but it wouldn't require it. All it's required is to have the minimum required parking of hard surface off-street. When the previous or the current owner requested a change of zoning, they were planning on hard-surfacing that entire alley, because there was going to be their main entrance off or into their complex, which it was completely switched around to face toward the alley.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought when, because what did we approve, what, probably three years ago? When she was going to build a commercial building there?
In that case, that was a variance request to have a primary access off an alley, as well as probably setback variance.
And that's why they were planning on, and that was the planning commission at that time, and city council approved it with the planning commission to hard surface. They were going to finish the entire alley, because she was going to use that as their main access point, which that didn't happen, so.
My only concern is with the increased traffic, having that parking there. If it's a dirt alley, it's going to be a lot of maintenance on the city.
Well, and it is a gravel alley, pretty wide, and then, of course, the lube center is right there that exits their customers out into that alley.
Right.
And I don't think the right-of-way through there is very wide to begin with. It's only maybe, I don't even know if it's 50 feet.
For the alley?
Yeah.
That's about 22 feet.
I was going to say, so. I mean, I like the idea, and I don't personally have a problem with a zoning change. I mean, to me, it's highway service anyway, and the buildings that were going to go in there were a multi-level, you know, commercial venture, that to me, this will be no more distraction. Is, if you weren't to do 21 units and just a two-story, would that? Is a three-story kind of a make-or-break this project, or?
You know, possibly, meaning, I'm not here to press the envelope too much, okay? I mean, you know, it's a vacant piece of property.
Sure.
At some point, something should be on there. Probably the highest and best use is, you know, apartments, or, you know, from my imagination, what I can come up with, you know. I'm all for what's the highest and best use. It's just probably apartments. So if you got the land, you know, does it make sense to put as many as you can in there? And so, you know, it's, you know, the land's more expensive. I mean, everything's more expensive than you want it to be now. And, you know, another seven apartments helps the model for sure, but, you know, there's other ways to work it, too, so.
In regards to the density, if it were actually just split apart, if it was rezoned to the recommended residential zone, it actually allows for 6,000-square-foot lots. And so when you start looking at the maximum densities that could be on the piece of property just with the rezone, if the developer would actually split it based off of what's allowed, it could be up to actually 24 units on that same property, because it's large enough to have three separate lots. So based on the densities, it's not necessarily really looking at much of a difference, given the amount of land that this parcel covers. It's really more about the additional half-story that goes above. You know, because right now it's a two-and-a-half-story limit, but given the floodway concerns, that's why it's recommended to be increased to three stories total.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with, like I said, the zoning change and the need for apartments is definitely there. And I think actually a residential of some sort, whether apartments, is a better use for that than the commercial, because the visibility isn't that great. But I do see neighbor concerns with, you know, traffic down that alleyway and trying to back in and out with speedy lube. I mean, there's going to be, it's going to be a little congestion there for sure.
You know, something would go in there at some point, right?
Yeah, absolutely. It's already, I mean, do you have McDonald's, speedy lube, Sturgis Coffee? It's not going to be any busier than it already is.
With apartments?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, something would go in there at some point. It's just, you know, this is my idea at this point. And, you know, if there's a better idea at some point for a better use of it, I'm fine with that, too. But, you know, if we want to get something going there, then at what level do we want to put them in there? You know, and if you're going to break ground, you know, it'd be better to have 21 than 14, if we need them in town. But, you know, I don't want to push the envelope too much either.
Well, it's hard to even realize how much we need when there's zero availability, so people don't even have a choice today, so.
Well, and last night, what was there? What's the stuff that was approved last night at council? 25 jobs?
That's what Amanda said, yeah. The three businesses would give you 25 jobs.
Coming to town? And also theirs.
Well, I can tell you from experience, we manage 200 properties, and I don't have one availability right now in Sturgis.
Right.
Not one. So, I mean, the demand is definitely there, and, I mean, I don't mind that location for it either. And when you look at here, or the high-rise in town, I don't think that necessarily distracts from anybody or does anything too much for traffic, but.
It congests a little bit down there.
Well, with the middle school and stuff when that's happening.
But I see definitely the necessity of housing.
Absolutely.
Apartment-style housing. That would be the only thing that would deter me a little bit or a little bit of concern with would be the potential, you end up having a lot of extra cars driving around there, but to kind of balance out the pros and cons of it, you know, we definitely need housing.
Any more questions? Anything else from the public?
And if there's anybody listening in on the phone, this would be the time you were able to speak up.
And is the reason to go to the residential versus multifamily, so you don't ask spot zoning, is that? And which then limits it to eight, right? If it was actually zoned multifamily, we wouldn't?
Yeah, if it were zoned as multifamily, this would fit without any variances or anything else. But that could potentially be considered spot zoning. And so had, beans that the residential is immediately across the street, that's not spot zoning, and it probably fits that parcel better, given that that parcel doesn't actually have any highway frontage. And so it probably fits residential more. And the neighboring residential zone allows up to eight units on a 6,000-square-foot parcel. And so that's where the maximum number of units could, on that parcel, could be up to 24 units. The one real limitation is just the height of the building, which is two-and-a-half stories, but given the floodway, it's impossible to do a half-story.
It's going to be pretty tall once you set it up above base flood elevation there, even without.
How much fill is there to get to base flood elevation?
We won't know until it's, we get the actual elevation set. But I will tell you this, with, over the, since that property's been for sale, we've had numerous calls from real estate agents, people that wanted to buy it. Part of the reason that they weren't able to buy it for residential property was because of floodplain and the cost of flood insurance. And then, of course, we had numerous real estate agents want, people wanted to put storage units there. Of course, that zoning isn't correct for that, but that's why, part of the reason it's not been built on yet so far.
Oh, yeah, it will stick up in the air, but, you know, there's three-story apartments other places, too, so. Two and a half would be optimal. It's just not an option here. So, you know, it slopes. The reason it's in the, you know, southwest corner is because it slopes to the northwest. So there's a lot less fill needed in the, you know, this, the corner by the sign in the picture right there, you know, there'd be about four feet of fill required if you built it and that. But, you know, there's a couple feet of drop, so it's manageable back in that other corner.
Yeah, that retaining wall at the back of the coffee shop is probably fairly close to it, isn't it?
Hmm, I'm hoping it's not that high. Shannon didn't know more than me, but.
Do you have something to add, Ben?
Yep, so, the one thing that I see, Ben Peterson, the one thing I see is the parking. I know, so I've lived at a few different apartment complexes in town. The Help You Rent up on Ballpark, there is a huge issue with parking up there. You can almost never find a spot. I've had to park in the drainage areas because of it. And then where I'm currently at, we always, we're shuffling back and forth, too. So that's, I just see the parking. I don't, I don't really have any issues with height or anything else. We do need more apartments. We do need more housing in town. The one-bedroom would be nice for some lower income, and then the two-bedroom would be good for single mothers and fathers. So I think it would be great, just the part. So, I, I, I think it would be great, just the parking.
So, there's twenty-eight spots for twenty-one units?
Yeah, and then if you get, if you get a couple in there, and if you got, if, say, if you have four couples, there's two cars each, and that, that doubles, right there is your parking, it's gone, used up.
It, our ordinance requires one-and-a-half spots per unit, and maybe that needs to be looked at in the future, changed, uh, for more of these developments, but that's what it currently is right now.
I believe it's actually one and a quarter.
Oh, one and a quarter, sorry.
For this type of use.
It is an issue, I know with ours, and this looks a lot like arrangement I have for sixteen-plex, and, and parking is an issue. Everybody seems to have two vehicles, and so, they're gonna be on the street there, I mean, that's inevitable on a, with two-bedroom units.
Yeah.
I don't know how you prevent that, but, that's again, where I was just kind of, I mean, and I get it, you know, the more, once you're doing it, your cost per unit goes down, and your land costs and everything, once you get going.
Get as many as you can.
Do as many as you can, you get a better return, or at least try to get a return. But I do think.
I don't think this one's lining up to be a runaway.
Yeah, they're, they're.
So, it's.
They're tough as it is, I get that.
Try and get a return.
I do think that that, uh, that street will be lined with vehicles, though.
Both Williams and Twelfth will be.
Yeah.
What's that?
Both Williams and Twelfth will be.
Right.
Lined with vehicles.
And, like I say, if that's, you know, if we're reaching the uncomfortable point, then, you know, maybe we just give it more time to find the right fit there, too.
Well, and that's where if you, you know, if there was some potential for expansion of parking, but, you know, that's kind of a tight space up there, and there's not a lot of overflow area, other than on the street, or into the neighbors.
So, I'm just gonna ask, if you could get a variance to slide it back towards the Sturgis Coffee a little bit more, and maybe open up some more spots there along Twelfth Street.
How are you with the green space, the coverage?
It's right where it's need, right's right where it needs to be right now, if you allowed a, um, different setback on what would be the backside toward the coffee shop, to slide the whole unit further back, you might gain a little bit more of that green space in that front to the right, and add a few more parking spots, but I, I, you'd need a very, then we'd have to have a variance to the amount of green space, too.
You got to have a variance to setback and green space.
That's correct, yes.
So, you know, another thing is, you know, we jammed it in here, you know, we tried to maximize it, um, you know, we met the ordinance with the parking, but, you know, if, if that's, you know, in reality, you know, gonna cause, if that's in reality, actually not enough, right? For the two bedrooms, and we're more concerned, you know, that probably points more to a two-story one than a three-story, right? Meaning, that would, you could get the same number of parking spots in the two-story as you could a three-story, right? But then, you know, in order to make that pencil, you probably need some, you know, tiff financing. So, and, you know, I'm just throwing that out as an option, um, if that makes the project more palatable.
Well, the nice thing, you could probably take advantage of the abatement too, on the tax abatement for over a four-unit.
Yeah.
What?
For building over a four-unit, you'd get the five-year tax abatement with the county.
Yeah, that helps, but, you know, still gotta get it put up at a, you know, because there's gonna be, you know, you know, part of the, everybody can figure out how the model works, but, you know, seven more units helps pay for that much parking, meaning, the hard surfacing, and, and, you know, all the, all the connections, and, you know, I think there's a abandoned line in there that's gotta be taken out, and on and on, so. I don't know how creative we wanna get to make something fit, or if we wanna try again.
If that's something the commission would like, you know, to explore, or something we could definitely look at, you know, doing a TIF district, it would be very small, given that it's, you know, just a, a small portion, but that's the redevelopment that, you know, TIFs were really designed to, and that could hopefully make up some of the difference, so that a smaller complex could still be feasible to be constructed there.
And, and that, uh, you know, I was looking at it more, you know, basically not knowing, I was looking at, so the ordinance covers parking, if you can get in, if you meet the ordinance, you know, you're, that makes sense, and it, it does, you know, on the paper, but in reality, if that's gonna put pressure out on the street, you know, that's gonna be a stress point, you know, right out of the gate.
Just kinda breaking that down, I'm looking at even if each unit, there's twenty-one units, correct?
Yeah.
If they were to all have two vehicles, so, you know, it's fourteen extra vehicles, that would not have parking spots, and that's if every unit had two, so you start breaking that down in the Williams and Twelfth Street, um, the, the school downtown, you know, that all functions with the high-rise, and they have quite a few more vehicles loading up the streets all the way around that. Granted, there's a school there, you know, that, but it's still, it works, but it's congested. Just trying to look at it both sides here, if we actually, you know, that'd be seven, seven extra cars per block, basically.
And you, you'll get.
Worst case.
Yeah, that's probably the worst case, and you will have, I mean, I know, just from my own experience, with one-bedroom units, you don't, you may not even have a driver either, they might be, you know, somebody that's getting, taking local public transportation, but that being said, there's definitely gonna be a lot of overflow. I mean, the zoning change, I don't, I don't see an issue at all, even going to a multi, I mean, I'm probably not doing a spot zoning multifamily, but a few less units, so this, you know, alley parkway is more of an overflow than a, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be full. I mean, this, if that building's built there, I, I think your street's gonna be lined, your neighbors across the street, you know, and I hate to see the city all of a sudden start getting lots of.
Hate mail?
Hate mail, because now we have residents that are paying property taxes on their frontage, and they're not even getting to park in front of their building, their own home.
Dave's popular enough.
I know. Well, and then you get into snow removal, and you got a snow route, and then where do they even go with that, you know?
Yeah.
Because there isn't, there isn't an option to get into the parking lot and off the street during a snow event.
Like what Brad said, you know, worst case scenario, you know, um, you know, it won't even, Williams, on the property or on the property line, William Street and Twelfth Street won't even hold fourteen cars.
Right.
What if instead of losing seven, you cut the three off of the end? What does that look like?
Um.
So, you're not, you're only losing three instead of seven, and then you gain more parking that way?
So, you know, we're pretty, like, this is, um, you know, we're just at this stage, right? But what the engineer did tell me that laid this out was, um, moving it back from the east to try and put more parking in there, didn't really benefit us that much, because you have to have so much driving lane.
Sure.
And I think he called it turning radius or something, that it just couldn't. I didn't go into it in a lot of detail, it just, he didn't sound like it was a starter, or it was a non-starter, right? So, anyway.
Well, I kinda agree with him, if you take the three units off, off of here, bring this back, could we get, you know, like, four more into?
That's what I'm saying, the engineer said.
Even if sliding it, if we would slide it back a little bit, could you, coming in off of Twelfth?
Right, so you're saying, slide it back and reduce the setback?
Reduce the setback and take three units off.
Yeah, so, I don't, I didn't ask him to look at it as, if you took the, um, if you reduce the setback, um, but it's, I mean, what is the rear setback? You can only gain so much there and still make enough turning radius.
I'm, I'm with Bill, I don't have a problem with the zoning change, it's the parking that's got me concerned.
And then, you know, the other thing, you know, I'm not arguing it either way, but it's been talked about, is that alley really, you know, wide enough to have that much parking in there? It's the only way it makes this model work, but, you know, I can see that that's not the best either, right? And it's probably not impossible, but is it?
Yeah.
How, how doable is it?
Well, it's, we had a lot of conversation last go-around on the same property with that, I mean, the arrangement was a little bit different, but it was for the same purposes, that, trying to make it, the access through there, plus there's telephone poles and utility easements, and.
Yeah, there's shit everywhere.
It's fences, it's, it's tight. I mean, I, I, I like it for, for an apartment complex, I'm just kinda more in, probably inclined to something with fewer units, and a little better parking capacity in that location.
So, are there, um, are there other apartments in town, or buildings in town with parking off the alley? That, you know, how does that work in other places?
Yeah, we've, we, I have one on Main Street that's accessed off the alleyway behind the Vets Club.
Yeah.
And that one's tight too, but it's not really a throughway, I mean, it is a throughway, but it's mainly residents that are going there, we don't have, you know, you get some overspill from the Vets Club coming down the alley, but we got plenty of room to get out of the way.
Right.
But it is, it is muddy, and, you know, residents get.
I don't, I mean, I don't envision this turning into a throughway, um, but it'd be more of a, have more of an opportunity to be a, a throughway than yours down there, right? But, uh, you know, I guess, thinking through what I just said, people are gonna come off of LaZelle and use it as a throughway to get to the parking, rather than, you know, going around from the, coming in, they're not always gonna come in from the east, they're gonna come off LaZelle, so it might end up being a, a throughway, so, I'll take back what I just said, so.
Rod, is there any interest in maybe reducing the actual floor plan, so that maybe you take one unit off? I mean, on one side, and maybe not even slide the apartment complex or anything else, but just take one unit off, so that instead of twenty-one, there was, you know, eighteen or something like that versus two-story? The cost of construction might be lower on a three-story still than a two-story, and you just would reduce three units and.
Right, I, I think that would be the, you know, would it be better to have, you know, eighteen and three-story, or would it be better to have fourteen and two-story?
Yeah.
Right, I, I think that's a question, because, you know, not everybody's gonna rent an apartment on the third floor, so you got, you know, it'd be better, and that's all you'd be saving is.
Yeah.
Is the ones on the third floor, in effect, and so, the man for those is, I mean, we could, we could pencil that out, but, you know, I don't know if it's for four units, do you wanna go three-high?
Sure.
It would be the, would be the question.
Do you know how deep those parking lots off the alleyway are, from the actual edge of the?
My guess is they're, you know, within an inch of code. I would guess, because it's just that tight.
Yeah.
Everything's, you know, you know, it looks like he's got a sidewalk there, um, so, you know, there's, there's probably a code to the size of the, of the, of the parking spot, right, and I'm sure he's tapped into, or my experience with him is he'd be tapped into that. But your point of that is, if it's that tight, and, you know, there's no extra room between the parking spot and the, between the end of the vehicle and the alley, is what your product point probably is.
And when they go to back out of it, you know, and you gotta come straight out if you're stacked in there, you know, you almost gotta back.
All the vehicles are bigger now, and, you know.
You're probably gonna be backing into the speedy lube.
And half of them might be sticking out.
Yeah.
Right, and so, um, I, I mean, I can see this, we got some counselors there too, if they wanna weigh in, but, um.
Well, example, with Dudley and Middle, they have alley parking. Kitty corner from Iron Horse, you got one that four-plexed.
Yeah, that one is too.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't believe there's any question about the need for housing, it's not gonna get any better. So, the more we can come up with, the better for us.
What do you guys think about long parking?
I think that parking is a serious issue with that many units, and we're just talking about the, the tenants that would be living there, not even their guests, you know, um, so the residents on those streets are not gonna be happy even if cars parked all along that, in the safety, the snow removal, like it was mentioned.
So, if we could assess some of it, to, to help it be manageable to build a two-story, it's not the optimal number of units, but still getting some units, is that a?
Well, I think in a parking building there, it's good, yeah, just the number of units in the parking. I think three stories is a little.
To help with some congestion, could you put parallel parking, like along Williams, do an indentation and parallel park?
You can, that's not really a bad, uh, national highway traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can, but they try to play it off.
Okay.
It's important.
Yeah, well, they, they put it in right there off I-90, but the, the rest stop that used to be there.
Yeah.
So, it's important to keep the Ward One counselors out of hot water.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I'd be probably more in favor of kinda reworking it a little bit to accommodate better parking, I mean, even with a sixteen-plex, though, you're probably still gonna have some overflow onto the street, which I think Williams will accommodate some of it, especially on that side.
I think if we're honest, you know, just doing the math like Brad did at the outside, or whatever, you know, that's probably a stretch for that to absorb twenty-one apartments, if we're, if we're just being honest.
Well, and go back to that picture, if you look, I don't know if that's a, or that one works too, but. Where the old, uh, sales shop is there, do they still have a fence and stuff? I mean, they're not even, I, I'll bet they're right on the property line, so, the way that parking is gonna be set up, somebody's gonna try and back out of that, and that shed and fa, I mean, that might get.
Yeah, it might get.
Pretty tricky, just in itself, or even a functionality thing, and you might not even be able to park two side by side and still get out without doing a.
Right, right, yeah, because whatever, is that a garbage can right there? Yeah, and that's, you know, all but right in the alley, right? And so, you know, the other places in town that, that have alley parking, you know, might be able to make it work, but. you know, the other places in town that, that have alley parking, you know, might be able to make it work, but I don't know if we want to create another one. Or if, you know, they have things, you know, just inherently more in, in that property's favor, or if they just did it back then for, because they did it, right? But, you know, if something else would fit better here, I'm, I'm good too.
Is it something that the commission may want to look at? Proceeding with the zoning change and a variance, but then reduce it to not necessarily the 21, but 14 or 16, something kind of in that range and proceed with that, and then we can try to work on a site plan and the financing a little more over the next month?
Yes. I guess my thought is, is approve the variance.
Deny the height requirement?
And deny the rest of it until there's some rework done and kind of what the final plan might be, because he's gonna have to pencil out the numbers, and if it doesn't work, he's gonna come back with a different idea.
Yeah.
That's how it's gonna, I mean.
Or not.
Or not.
So, um, yeah, and again, you know, it doesn't take long to figure out, you know, 14 won't work without some TIF financing. It doesn't take long to figure out. And I'm not saying I want a TIF, I'm just saying you gotta weigh the benefit of TIF versus you gotta figure out how bad you want the apartments. Or somebody does. But I'm concerned, I mean, you've, this has been a good discussion about the parking and the realities, because we're all just being, talking about honest scenarios of, you know, that alley might actually be too tight.
Sure.
Just the way it's set up. There might be other alleys the same width that just have, you know, don't have the garbage can generally right there, right? And so, and they might have been built before all the vehicles are as big as they are now and, you know, on and on, right?
So are, are you okay with?
I'm, I'm okay with anything, meaning, I'm just, this is just a proposal.
Sure.
And so, you know, the purchase agreement's contingent, so, Laura got some money out of me, but it'll be all right.
I mean, they could always, I mean, even if we go ahead and approve to send for, send it to the council and for further hearing, I mean, they can always, they can cancel that at any time, right? I mean, I don't want to change the zoning on something if somebody doesn't.
That was gonna be my next question is, you know, if you change the zoning, is that just changing it for this project? Or is it changing it permanently? And if it changes permanently, is that what you really want?
So it would change it permanently. That's only after the council adopts it though, so not necessarily based on the recommendation of here. I think if you proceed with it, it would probably be enough that the applicant would be able to start working on the numbers to see if it's really feasible. And allow it to still go through the process to see if it is feasible at, you know, a two-story or something like that. And if it would be a two-story and a TIF, that's still gonna come back to you guys anyway.
Sure.
So it's not that you're gonna see it again. This isn't your only chance.
And you'd have time to rework it or pull it, or the current owners would, so, I mean, we don't want to change the zoning on something that, and just to have them change it back if your project doesn't work and somebody else comes forward and wants to strip them all there, so.
Yeah.
It'd be good if somebody come with a better idea. So, um, I'd, I'd work on it some more, meaning we could keep it going. Just so if we see if this'll fit or if it won't. You know, if we went to 14, would it make sense to, you know, angle some of those parking in the alley? Would that help?
I think that made good sense, yeah.
You'd, you'd lose some spots. You'd definitely make it a through fair though. Right? It would definitely go, because if.
It has to go east-west.
Either coming or going, right?
Yeah.
But it might help with some of the, you might miss the garbage can more. But you'd lose a couple. But if you only had, and I'm not, I'll, I'll ask the engineer again if it makes more sense to do it, but I'm thinking you'd take the third floor issue out of it as far as renting them if you, if you just settled on 14. You wouldn't need as many, you know. Anyway, those are some ideas.
Sure.
It's official, you gotta speak in the microphone now? So, like I say, I'm up for anything. It's just, you know, what makes the most sense with.
Sure.
You know, I mean, some people aren't gonna be happy with anything, but what's palatable. And I, I probably don't feel good about that many cars on the street.
Any other questions? Any more comments? So is that kind of the general consensus then?
So you need two motions.
Yep.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to change the zoning from highway services to medium-density residential.
Second that. So we have a motion to change the zoning, but we're not, not applying anything else as far as variance to the number of units?
That's the second motion.
The second motion.
Oh, we're not, okay.
So can we just ask, so just a question, what would the next steps be then? If this goes through where we approve the rezoning, but not the, the variance for number of units basically, right? It's that.
Well, I think our second motion will be a recommendation on the number of units.
Right.
And then you can go work that, and then at the council meeting correct, maybe come back with a plan that fits in that one if you, if it makes sense.
What, what I think would happen from it is if the commission were to grant a variance for the number of units on the, on the parcel, say it's 14 or whatever the, the commission comes up with, then at that point, you would start working with the numbers and we can see if a TIF makes sense. And if that would help make the project proceed, and if that's what everyone wants, then at that point, the TIF would still come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we would have a public hearing out of Planning and Zoning Commission probably in June, yeah, in June. And then at that point, the zoning change, the variance, and the TIF would be presented to the council. So I don't think the council would see your two motions tonight until a TIF would be brought forward as well, so that it's all at one time in front of the council. And then that would be probably the second meeting in June, I would think.
So is there time to get, you know, is there time from the first planning meeting in June to the, to get to, is there something that notices or whatever that has to happen after the planning meeting in June to get to the second council meeting in June?
We have to notify, if we're setting up a TIF district, you have to set up, you have to notify the school district, county, and the city as well.
Before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, that's for the Planning Commission meeting in, I suppose, June 7th. And then, then you would set the public hearing for early July for city council review, is that correct?
Well, you would set it for the second meeting in, in June, but it would include a zoning change, so that requires two readings by the city council. And so the second final one would be the first meeting in July. July, I don't know what date that is. The first Monday.
Taking that into consideration. What would we project interest rates are gonna do between now and then? I don't think they're gonna be.
They'll be higher.
Yeah, they're gonna be higher. So, I mean, everything, everything's slight. I don't have an answer.
I think, I think that's as fast as we could do, is that everything could be finalized by that July 5th council meeting.
And that would probably determine, be determined whether it was a private funded TIF or if it's a city TIF, right?
Yes, a TIF this size, I mean, it would be a small one compared to a large one. The city would finance this just to expedite it.
So, um, you know, the first, the, the first meeting in July is workable for me if we could, you know, I, I gotta think about it more if, I'm just saying this in my own mind, if it stretches out past that, and then I gotta work on the purchase agreement and everything else, so.
I'm sure.
And not that it couldn't be done, but, you know, if we're gonna have it closed in by winter and on and on.
Sure.
The what? Right? Right, that's, that was my only question. If, when would you need to get all the notice requirements for the next planning meeting? When would you need all the info?
I'll get back to you on that. I'll have to sit down. I am a visual person. I gotta sit down and look at all these dates.
Then I usually take about three more days than you give me in.
Last time was pretty tight, so. Yeah, we want a nice buffer of time to give, you know, proper notification.
It wouldn't take time, it wouldn't take long to chop a floor out of this and tip the, tip the parking, right? But.
Easy.
But you gotta run the numbers and stuff.
Sure. All right, so we've got a motion to.
One more question, so, um, you know, this is swimming upstream, but, you know, would it make sense to go to two floors? And then, you know, slide it back a ways and put two more on the end as a way to get to 16? We'd be asking for another variance. And I'm not saying that has to be, I'm just saying before I ask the engineer to run that scenario. You know, and I don't, I haven't, I don't, my drawings don't have the, the width of the apartments, you know, but, you know, if that's a 30-foot setback, we're probably, you know, that probably doesn't work unless we took some off of both sides. Or would you guys not, rather, rather not see that option?
I'm just not sure if there's enough, you know, to actually get two more units. I mean, I guess we'd have to see it to see how far that's gonna push it back to the west there.
And what would happen in the front, because you probably need a little off of both sides, your front setback and your rear.
Is that currently 30-foot? Is that where that's at?
Well, the setbacks, if, if it's rezoned, it is 10 feet in the front, and we do have to follow an 18-foot corner on Williams, and then 10 on the west. And then I think there might be a special supplemental ordinance on alley parking we'd have to look into. But I'm not sure where the building is sitting at currently.
I need some dimensions.
I, I believe the building is sitting right at the, right on the setbacks as currently set. It meets the ordinance.
Yeah, that's what my guess is too.
So, and the reason it's oriented the way it is is because the corner out, because it needs an 18-foot on the corner of Williams and 12th. So that's why it's oriented where, where it is right now.
And I'm not saying that makes sense, I was just.
Sure.
Something I was thinking of. But it'll be interesting how many parking spots you lose if you angle them too.
Well, in that case, you, you might want to pull them closer to 12th Street, because that stuff that's on the back end that you're backing into potential buildings and things might not be very functional anyway. Okay. All right, so we've got, we've got a motion on the table to change the zoning from the highway service to the medium density residential. Do we have a second? Second by Brad. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? No? Same sign? Motion carries. So we've got the approval to send a recommendation to the council for a zoning change. So the second part to that would be whether or not we're gonna recommend the variance. So, what, what number is everyone thinking?
I think the 14, because I don't think you're gonna get two more units on the end, just the lay of the land isn't gonna allow it. So I would lean towards the 14. Also takes the parking into consideration a little bit more.
So is that a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to, for variance to maximum attached units for apartment complex for 14 units.
And we're not, we're not varying the height requirement, correct?
Okay.
So we've got a motion for the maximum allowable to be 14. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Second by Alex. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes for me? No? Motion carries. So, does that make sense? So now that'll go to work that, and that's gonna come back to planning and zoning, correct? With a possible TIF idea or?
A TIF boundary, yes. We'd have to come back to Planning Commission.
Sound good?
We'll see.
Thanks, Rod.
Thanks, Rod.
Thanks for talking through it.
You bet. Good discussion. Next item up is a final plat for Lot 6A revised R and Lot 6C revised of Wilkerson Estates.
This is the final plat application for 6A revised R and Lot C 6, 6C revised of Wilkerson Estates. Approximate location is 1621 Hope Street, 7th and Hope Street. We visited the preliminary plat at the previous, or I'm sorry, on the April 5th meeting. And this was just a lot line adjustment between the two lots that Ms. Wilkerson owns in order to have an attached garage that would meet setbacks. And Mr. Vastness is here. Staff recommends approval of the final plat. If you have any questions, Mr. Vastness is here to address them.
I don't, there any changes from the preliminary, is there?
Nope, no changes were made since you seen it last time.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody want, any discussion from the public? Anything else from commission?
A motion to approve, second.
A motion by Alex to, and a second by Aaron. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes for me. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. So that goes, that goes to the next council meeting on the 16th?
Yes.
For a final plat?
Yes, on the consent calendar for May 16th.
Action item 3.4. Action item 3.4, plat of lot R1, block 4 of Palisades subdivision from GSGSLC.
So this is, GSGSLC is, this is an application from Mike Strain. Submitted a plat application, lot 1R in block 4 of Palisades subdivision. So this is on the intersection of Split Rock Drive and Dolan Creek Road. It is currently a vacant lot designated for town home development. However, the plat is going to combine these two lots for single-family housing. So that being said, since it was designed for town home construction, there are dual service lines, sewer and water for this property. So per ordinance, either the lines have to, the extra line has to be abandoned or a service, a utility service charge would be applicable to be paid by the landowner. So, and as well as any new approaches for driveway construction would have to be approved by Public Works as well. But other than that, all other Title 18 regulations on size and setbacks are met. So staff would recommend approval of the plat with the conditions that the service lines be addressed, whether it be through a plat note or addressed at some point before final plat or before it's filed. And Mr. Vastas is here to answer any questions as well.
Yeah, and I'm open to, whether it be put on the plat or whether staff wants to do a developer's agreement with a developer on the side or however you guys best want to handle that to make sure that happens, so. On the services, so.
What's, what's the easiest way to deal with that? Does he need to go back into the street to?
There's several ways. If by ordinance, you have to abandon them at the mains in the street, which means taking open, cutting that fairly new street and then replating it or in repairing it, putting it back. Or whoever purchases the home that's built there will be paying two service fees for that extra line, their monthly fees on that. That's, that's pretty much basically the way, the choices. We take it out or they pay an extra fee every month for it. And they're responsible.
If it leaks?
Well, if the curb stop leaks back to the main, we're responsible for that. But they have to pay the, the service fees for it.
What is, what is Mr. Strain's intention there?
I have no idea, just to be honest. We haven't had that conversation, so.
I, I did, I did make, I did attempt to contact Mike, but he was, he was busy today, so he hasn't got back to me. But we had this, we had made discussions with that on previous two other lots that were set, scheduled for town homes or twin homes and are now single family. So he, he understands where we're at with that and what we're going to do.
And also to note, I believe previous staff discussion also addressed the access with the other single-family lots that were on those intersections of Split Rock Drive, Dolan Creek Road. That the access would be required, or should be from Split Rock Drive rather than Dolan Creek Road.
And I can add that to the plat pretty easily, just a non-access hatched area off Dolan Creek so that it's well aware of anybody, future buyer, that that'll be their, their, their access.
So I suppose if that's on the plat, though, but it doesn't, I mean, I would assume a new homeowner would be informed that they got to pay availability fees.
I would hope so.
It's not, if it's not undone.
That would, that would be the responsible thing to do, to let them know that, yes. If, if they aren't removed.
Done with the previous properties that came up with the same situation?
They're paying the, the extra availability fees at this time.
So then it would be their requirement to go into the street and redo it. Where is the main, do you know, on that one? Is it on that side of Split Rock or is it a, just curious?
No, I believe that's on the other side.
Yeah, I believe it is on the other side.
It's been a while, but I, yeah, I believe that. You have to open cut and remove all the pipe or just fill much at the main?
Have to take the service line out all the way back to the main, both water and sewer by ordinance.
Probably just be best just to leave it then there.
Good tire sprinkler system to one tap and. Get something out of it, I guess.
The big thing is it's not if that extra tap is going to leak, it's when it's going to leak. Because we have them up in Vernon Heights that we've had to replace several of them because they were leaking because of non-use.
Sure, okay.
And I believe you said that's at the city expense at the tab.
That is correct, yeah.
And that is why the, the MUB actually put that into place. And because of the number of lines that we were actually fixing that were 15 years old, never had been used and were starting to leak, and so then they'd have to be taken out and the road would have to be repaired and everything else. And you look at that and say in 15 years, there is no revenue that came from that. And all the utility payers of the city paid for that repair, so.
I mean, the lot, I don't, I don't see any issues with replatting the lot.
No. Zero issues with that, just concern of what to do with the main there. Everything has to be removed.
Some of that's probably liability of the city and you guys' recommendation is to, was to approve? Staff recommendation? With conditions that, uh?
That, that if you put on the plat and when the home that is constructed there is sold, that somehow that that's brought up at the, at closing or prior to closing, that they are going to be responsible for two services if the line is not, the lines are not removed. So basically, they'll just pay an availability fee for the, for the extra water line, which is like $35 or something like that a month.
That's a better route to go than to, because I suppose they, with those townhomes too, they probably put all those service lines in the same ditch too, didn't they? So they're two feet apart, so trying to dig one up and get rid of it and.
Yeah, there, there's kind of a, a mess of lines up that way.
That might crisscross. No, I'm kidding.
So just hope you take the right one out?
Depends on surveying it, the crisscross.
Any other comments from the public? Any questions for the commission? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the replat and have the wording put on the plat that there is two service lines, they will pay an availability fee if they're not removed.
So I have a motion by Aaron, do I have a second?
Second that.
Second by Brad, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes for me? Motion carries. So that'll go to the next council meeting, correct? I think that's all we had for action items tonight, isn't it? Any other discussion or any public comments? No, anything from staff? All right. Go on, do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alex, second by Aaron, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Adjourned, thanks.